Please rise for the invocation, Reverend George Coats, Pastor Hartzell, Memorial United Methodist Church and McQueen's Chapel United Methodist Church.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
May we pray together. Most omnipotent and omnipresent God, this evening we come humbly asking your guidance and blessings as we embark upon this meeting. We thank you for allowing us to come together to conduct the business of this council tonight. And we ask that you be the supreme architect of this meeting and that all things be done in order and to your glory. We ask that you would guide all thoughts, words, and deeds tonight so that the heart of this community can be felt by those who have been duly elected to serve this constituency. We thank you tonight for their willingness to answer your call to service. And we pray for all those who would be affected by the decisions made this evening and that your will would be done in all that we say and do. It is in your name that I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No persons requesting to be heard. Motion to approve the minutes of our meeting on May 19th?
I'll move approval.
Motion by Seaver, second by Zaga Rowley. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That is unanimous and all members are present. Motion to reaffirm and ratify on second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Patton, second by Seaver. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. In the consent agenda, I'd like to ask that D and E and H be removed and make a motion that we accept the consent agenda except for those items.
Second.
Motion by Wright, second by Mazner. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Mr. Burden? Just a little clarification for the folks, please, on the write-offs.
Yes, sir. What you have on the agenda, item D, is approval to write off uncollectible accounts totaling This general statute's established that all street easements and property taxes that are over 10 years old are no longer collectible and should be written off. So you're looking at, it is a lot of money, $227,000, but it's over the course of 10 years. So approximately $22,000 a year. From the current fiscal year, there are no street assessments to be written off but $88,000 in unpaid property tax that exceeds the 10-year limitation. The City of Hickory Accounting Division requires all other accounts that are over 18 months in arrears be written off to comply with GAAP, generally accepted accounting principles, in order to more fairly represent them on the financial statements of the city. And for the current fiscal year, this amount is $139,635. Obviously, we continue to pursue those debts. Everything over $50 is eligible to be pursued through the North Carolina Debt Setoff Program. And what that means is if you owe the City of Hickory a debt and you receive a North Carolina income tax return, we get paid before you get your income tax returned back. As of 2000, as of this month, May 5th, the City of Hickory has collected $30,525 from those garnishments. And also lottery winnings, I forgot about that. If you win the lottery, we get our cut, we get our debts paid out of that. So that's what the, that's what the item is. And Finance Director, Ms. Melissa Miller, can answer any more detailed questions than that.
Okay, as I understand it, the, the write-off of property taxes, that's a statutory requirement?
It is.
It's at 10 years. The assumption is it's uncollectible, but you keep trying to collect it.
Correct.
The other items, it's not statutory, it's a matter of what is more likely than not uncollectible.
Correct.
And of course, I know you all continue to collect and it amazes me, your diligence, but there are some pretty large items in those write-offs. So I would recommend we accept this, accept these write-offs. And I just wanted the people to understand a little more. In fact, this is a very small amount of the total dollars that go through the city's receivables.
That's true.
Very small. Most corporations would be very pleased to have this smaller percentage of charge-offs. So I make that motion that we accept these charge-offs.
I'll second.
Motion by Wright, second by Leo. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion is unanimous.
Hi to me, it's asking council to consider approving the termination of a leasing agreement for, this is property that the city has owned for a long period of time. The address is 470 Highway 70 Southwest. It's the former Catawba County Chamber of Commerce building and for the last many years was occupied by the Hickory J.C.s. The building is leased to the J.C.s for a dollar a year, so it's basically, they had, they've had free use of it. It's a very old building, it's in need of significant repair. They communicated with us over the last year or so about, you know, did they want to raise money to try to fix the building up or replace the roof, et cetera? Ultimately, they determined that they did not want to do that. So they have already vacated the premise, they don't meet there anymore. And now we're asking council to simply terminate that lease. Again, it's not a dollar a year lease, so basically the paperwork catching up with the actual decision that the J.C.s have already made.
Have we decided what to do with the building?
Not yet, but off the top of my head, I tell you, I don't think we're going to want to repair it. It's, it's in pretty rough shape.
Well, that's really the reason I'm, at this point, we, we just acknowledging that the J.C.s wish to break the lease.
Right.
Now, they paid a dollar a year and they've taken care of the routine normal maintenance.
All the utility, all the regular maintenance, correct.
And we've cut off the utilities, I'm sure, or I guess we have, except the water, which we take, which is an internal fund transfer. Okay, how much, how much, how much land is there?
It's, it's about maybe a quarter of an acre, a little less.
It's a very small.
Yeah, it's a, it's a kind of a postage stamp that sits there on that corner.
There are parking limitations.
Very limited parking behind the building, that's correct. So we'll need to come to you all at some point in time with some thoughts, you know, what you can.
The bank owns the property on the other side, and is the substation on the property on?
I believe the, I believe the substation, there might be one parcel between the substation and the city's property.
Kind of a nice location, though.
I think it's pretty small.
If it were larger.
Well, if it were larger, certainly. But for a small firm.
No, right.
I understand.
Pretty thin.
Go ahead, jump up.
Could be a passive park.
A small law firm.
A small passive park with the.
Yeah, small substation.
Okay, I make a motion, we accept the termination of that lease.
Second.
Second by Zaga Rowley. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That, all opposed, no. That's unanimous. And the next item, Mr. Burden, the only thing I was curious about is, is exactly where those parking spaces going to be for the Glen Hilton Park?
They're directly across from the existing parking. And we came to you all, it's been probably a year or so ago, 23 parking spaces. Why don't you come on up to the podium?
I'm not directly across.
The Nelson property's right across, isn't it?
And to piggyback on that, is there going to be any kind of crosswalks? Because that is a real curvy road and I want to make sure that there's appropriate marking for travel.
The man with the answers.
The man with the answers.
Mayor, I, Members of Council, Mr. Crowe. Back in 2011, city purchase of about an acre, little of an acre of a lot directly diagonally across from Hilton Park, the city purchased for a future parking lot. As you know, we've, just the popularity of that park, we've had issues with that parking space on the weekend. Funds were appropriated in our Parks and Recreation Department budget to construct an additional parking lot there. I think that's, let's say, 53 additional parking spaces is what that would, you know, what that would allow us to accommodate that. And Ms. Patton, there are, there are pedestrian signals and we had that pedestrian crossing there. I think Chuck could answer that, but we have addressed that.
Thank you.
We have, we have addressed it. That will be a gated, it will be a gated lot that we will only open when we need, when we need it. So it's got to, we'll have an automatic gate on it.
Wasn't there some discussion about putting buses over there or something?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. But right now, the problem is, we would keep it really closed unless, unless we need it on the weekends and we, we would open, we would open it.
Yeah, and yeah, I was going to pull it from the consent agenda, too. Myself, I'd like to see what those plans look like. There's nothing in the agenda packet. I'm particularly concerned about the crossing. I know that there's some money in there to paint a crosswalk there. I think it's going to need something probably more substantial. There's reference to fencing in there. I don't know what kind of fence in that, what type of fence in that is. Where I'm trying to go with it is to make it, to ensure that it's compatible, I guess, with both the neighborhood and the existing park use. And also, I'm really concerned about that connection. It is, it is directly across from houses. So it's not directly across from the park.
Correct.
Yeah, so I'm concerned about that connection into the park. If there is a sidewalk on that side of the street, I think there is this time.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so some folks will be using that, so.
I'm going to follow up on both your questions. There is a push-button pedestrian crossing lights that will be installed and obviously painted crosswalk to go along with that. So it is a lit crossing, lighted crossing from a, from a flashing light scenario. The fencing that you see is a decorative fence that will actually be placed on top of a berm area that's landscaped and that'll be opposite the lake side of the, of the property, what I'd call the town side of the property, which is where it joins the existing residential property. So there'll be a three or four-foot berm in that area, then on top of that would be a decorative fence, six, six foot high. And it'll be a decorative fence on top of that with landscaping. So that's sort of the buffer between the existing residential property there and the, and the parking lot. And then on the, what I call the east side of the, the property, which is sort of what falls down in towards the pump station that sits back in there, that, that remains natural as it is. So it's not that entire piece of property. There's about really, only using about two-thirds of it in round numbers. And that's sort of the corner between, some of y'all knew where the driveway that goes into the money property and the James property and the, the pump station area is sort of that corner lot is where, where we're looking at here.
Yeah, so you say the cars stop? I mean, there would be a signal for cars to stop? How does that, how does a pedestrian crossing market a non-signal?
It's, it's actually a flashing light to warn motor stuff pedestrians in the crosswalk area. It's not a, it's not a traffic signal that's going to stop traffic. It's, it's a notification that you've got some, somebody in. And again, it's, it's activated just like a pedestrian crossing would be from a, from a push-button standpoint.
We may, we may have to look at speeds along that whole stretch as part of that whole thing.
Correct.
Especially between those two turns.
Because that's been a problem on that street for a long time.
Yeah, you come off that curve, particularly.
It's 35.
Headed towards the outside. Yeah, I mean, so I, I mean, I would, I appreciate the information and I, and I think it's good. I'd like to have, be able to look at a site plan, be able to see sort of what the fence looks like, the berm, and understand a little bit more how it connects to Hilton, Hilton Park. And I don't think there's any urgency. Is this, I noticed that this, there's no budget amendment with this.
Right, those funds have been, those funds are appropriated in our.
The current fiscal year. Yeah, okay, great.
I think this is about the, is this about the second or third time we've talked about? I mean, it's been a long process, you know? We've talked about the parking problems, we've talked about trying to acquire property. I couldn't find anything in the minutes, but we'd be fun, we'd be glad to bring y'all back whatever you're interested in seeing on it. Just want to make sure everybody understood this wasn't something that just came up last week. I mean, it's been in the works for a long while.
Does this delay jeopardize anything? If we delay it, does it jeopardize anything?
No, sir. The funds, the funds are appropriated within, within our current, within our current budget.
So delaying it one council meeting would have no significant impact?
No, sir.
And it's relatively significant and, you know, it's a $120,000 construction and capital project for parking there. Arguably, our most used park.
Do we have drawings on this?
See, they're not, there was none furnished in the agenda package, but now we have quotes. So the.
We had drawings before.
Yes, sir, there were construction, construction plans.
Yeah, we see, we saw, I think when we acquired the property, we looked at schematics. So this is how parking could work and this is, and so apparently y'all come for it.
And from a staff standpoint, we were very cognizant of, of crossing Sixth Street and that's why it has an automatic gate and would not be open only if, you know, the existing parking at Hilton Park is.
Well, that's taking effect because I know one of the complaints has been the parking up and down Sixth Street. So that it's not just that the park is full, but that they quit parking outside to use it.
We don't like to walk too far. Are you proposing? Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'll move, I'll move that, yeah, well, I don't, I won't specify a time, but I move to come back before council for, you know, details, construction.
I'll second that.
Motion by Leo, second by Patton. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. And we approved all of the others, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Burden?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item of new business is a public hearing on the city manager's recommended 15, 16 fiscal year budget. And prior to opening the public hearing, I'd like to present again in these chambers, So our last, at our last council meeting, your last council meeting, as I presented the budget, we talked quite a bit about the context of this annual spending plan and spent some time talking about the various measures that the city has gone through over the last 10 years, cost-saving measures and other things as we've tried to manage through the recession and really some significant changes to our local economy. Another way to look at that graphically, and you can see this better in your handout probably than you can on the chart, but we by law have to talk about the entire budget, which is appropriate, but the real part of the budget that is funded with taxes and with property tax and sales tax is your general fund. The other utility fund, sanitation fund, the airport, those are, are almost completely self-supporting from the fees that either our residents and businesses pay or users of the airport, et cetera. So the general fund really becomes the bellwether for looking at what's going on with taxes in your community. So this is a chart that shows what your general fund budget was in 2004, '05 and where it is in '14, '15. And what you're looking at is $40 million 11 years ago, $46 million in the current budget. So you've increased that by $6 million in that time. You've added 12 firefighters and 10 police officers. Those are the only substantial staffing changes you've made. And then it gets even more interesting when you look at, okay, so this line is the property tax. And you can see that that is almost completely flat. Your property tax has gone from 21.5 11 years ago to 23.5, so $2 million over 11 years or 0.8% a year. And I think it's, it's a telling chart for us to, to look at to really understand what's going on with your general fund, what's going on with property tax. A lot of times, what we're doing in the utility fund with major capital projects can make it look like you're having big increases and people can react to that. When in reality, for 11 years, you've been extremely flat in your general fund. And this chart starts to represent that. You know, here's your general fund, you're, you're staying, basically, I'm recommending staying consistent with where you've been in the past, actually a slight decrease. And I'm going to point out that this number is about $150,000 less than it was when I presented it to you two weeks ago because we had a overstatement in a transfer from the general fund to the solid waste fund that I did not catch. So it doesn't materially change your budget, it's simply a transfer between the funds that I didn't realize was, was being overstated there. So it's actually gone down slightly, 100, about $150,000. So again, that fund right there is where all of the property tax and sales tax is collected and accounted for. That's where the core services of the city that are supported by those taxes are funded from. Then you get into the water and sewer fund, which is little, almost little more than half the size of the general fund. And of course, that's 100% funded by the fees, that monthly fees that all of the businesses, individuals, and the other local governments that we sell water and process sewer for. The sludge comp posting facility is really a subset of your water and sewer fund. You can't operate wastewater treatment plants without having some mechanism to take care of the sludge. And that's accounted for separately because it's actually a partnership between the City of Hickory, the City of Conover, and Catawba County. So that's, again, set up there to do its own accounting, but that revenue, that $1.7 million is completely funded from the charges that all the users of the system for wastewater pay. Your water, your stormwater fund, that, that is, it's a relatively small amount of money. You don't have a separate revenue source to pay for stormwater, so that, that will be taxes and fees that are represented there. Of course, we talked about the airport at about $2.5 million, just a slight increase there. And that is self-supporting. So you don't have any general fund transfer going, you know, from the general fund, sorry, you don't have general tax dollars going from your general fund to your airport. And that's something we've been working hard on for, for several years to get it to that point. Your solid waste fund, I'm going to talk a little bit more about in a minute, but that's down significantly because we actually bought all the rollout carts that are being distributed around the city in this fiscal year. You don't have to do that expenditure again, so it's down because of that capital expenditure. But again, that's about 80% funded from the monthly bills that both the businesses and the residents pay. There's only a little bit of a subsidy from property tax there. The, all of these internal service funds, you know, are just basically double accounting. The mayor and I were talking earlier today about it. The capital reserve fund, you budget it in the water and sewer fund and then you turn around and have to move it to the, to the capital reserve fund for accounting purposes and you actually expend it from there. Fleet maintenance in the police department, in the fire department, in utilities, in sanitation, they all have money budgeted to maintain their vehicles. And then when they pay their bills, if you will, to them, to the city, that's all accounted for in fleet maintenance. Our insurance fund is the same way. All of the costs for human resources is accounted for in either the general fund or the water and sewer fund, these various funds, and then is moved between accounts within the city in the insurance fund. So you really are, you know, to the person on the streets, you're overstating your budget by almost 18 million, but that, we have to do it that way. That's generally accepted accounting principles and law that require us to account for it that way. So that's where you end up with just a little bit less than a 6% increase in your total overall budget. But as, again, your general fund is actually a slight decrease by 3, by 0.34%. So the big issues that we're dealing with in the budget this year, as we talked about, it's our last meeting, our revaluation of all the property throughout the county. We're seeing a 6.5% drop there. Statutorily, we have to present to you all and to the public a revenue-neutral rate. The rate for the City of Hickory revenue-neutral is 3.95 cents. So again, what that means is the rate may change, but on average, the tax bill stays the same. It gets, you know, it gets people excited to talk about, well, the tax rate's going up, the tax rate's going up. Mr. Bum likes to write about that, that's fine, that's true, the tax rate is going up. But what really matters, I think, to people is what's happening to my tax payments? So we went through this last time. The current value is $150,000 on average for a residential property in the City of Hickory. Our tax rate's at 50 cents. So that average property is paying a $750 a year bill or $62.50 a month. If that average home went down by the average loss that we saw across the city, 6.5%, you have a revenue-neutral rate of 53.95. They basically come in 50 cents more a month. You know, again, there's no way to equalize that across thousands of parcels and properties across the city. But the city will not take in any more revenue from revaluation than we've taken in in the past. The statute does allow you to have a little bit of growth factor in there because obviously we have new structures, new construction going on throughout the year and they don't make you wipe that out when you do your revenue-neutral formula. Any questions about that? The next big item that we're dealing with in the budget is the loss of the, or the repeal of the business privilege license. Again, that equates, that goes into effect July 1st, equates to $1.1 million. And to hold the city harmless would require a 2.7 cent tax rate increase. So going back to our same chart, revenue-neutral, 3.95 to replace the million, over million dollars in privileged license loss puts us at a tax rate of 56.65. So the loss of the privilege license does affect our taxpayers. And as we talked about last time, it is the first time in 20 years that we've considered a property tax rate increase. And as, I'll show you the chart again of what your general fund and your property tax revenues have done in 11 years. You can see that there, there are no windfalls, there hasn't been significant growth in your revenues. And so here it is again, your total expenditures over the course of 11 years, increasing by just a little over 1% a year and your property tax revenue being even more flat than that. This little variation right here is basically, I'm sorry, let me finish explaining what this line is. This is the million dollars in privilege license. So you can see, it's also been fairly, very flat. It's measured over here on this side, so it's $1 million in comparison with $20 million in property tax. But that's gone. So that's your, that's your million-dollar hole. So basically, what's happening is you've got to uptick your, your property tax by a million dollars to make up for the million-dollar loss that's taken place in the privilege license. That's, that means, that's exactly what's happening, it's just that straightforward. So let's drill into, to a little bit more into the recommended budget. Again, the big, the big dollar changes are taking place in your utility fund. We've got over $5.5 million in projects that are being funded in the upcoming year. And again, keep beating that drum that these are funds that are collected from the sale of water and sewer. So those are not tax dollars that are being used to develop the utility fund and replace pipes. They're the actual fees that everybody pays into the system to use water and sewer. Your overall highlights, of course, the penny's value goes down because of revaluation. We are seeing fairly strong growth in sales tax, which is encouraging. We still have a contingency built in of $650,000. That's been your practice and policy for a number of years so that when unexpected things come up during the year, you do have a. of years, so that when unexpected things come up during the year, you do have a small pot to pull from there. I'm not recommending any new positions. Our merit pay program is funded at 3% and 2% depending on performance. Our benefits package stays pretty much the same, a few little increases in deductibles and other copays, et cetera, in our health insurance. And fees per year policy are increasing consistent with the 2014 CPI, which is just a little less than 1%. In your water and sewer fund, the same policy applies for water and sewer rates. And then we have these major capital projects. Two, actually, all three of them, you've approved contracts to do design work. And so we expect having that designed and ready to be bid in the next coming 12 months, and those total $5.5 million. I mentioned the solid waste fund. Again, as you know, the city processes hundreds of millions of tons of waste a year. Our recycling has been very solid and continue, and we think will continue to uptick significantly with the new rollouts. It's 83.5% self-supporting. So again, everybody is paying as they get their monthly bills from the city. They're paying a separate charge. I'm proposing that that be increased from $16.50 a month to $18.50 a month. And the solid waste fund, 83.5% self-supporting, that's been kind of a strategic initiative that we've embarked on for the last several years. As, again, going back to those charts, your property tax has just been so flat, you've got to pay for services with other mechanisms. So going back to our chart to talk about, okay, what's happening on the average home, we've already covered the items on this side with the revenue-neutral tax rate. So we've got a $140,000 value home, tax rate of 56.65. That's $66.17 a month. So do a little comparison. The new monthly tax bill, if you will, they're currently sitting at 62.50. So you're looking at $3.67 more a month on property tax, and then the $2 solid waste fee. So on the average residential property, $5.67 more. With that, next steps are, of course, to hold your public hearing this evening. The recommended budget is available on the web. We used our new graphing tool to present the full budget. I hope you've had a chance to look at that and click on the different bars and drill down into the budget. I think that's pretty interesting and an easy way for the community to look at it. I just found out that our current year budget got taken down when the recommended budget got put up. So we'll have to figure out how to do both of those, so people can click back and forth and do some comparison. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that y'all may have.
You said the solid waste fund's 83.5% self-supporting. How does that compare with other municipalities?
Well, that's really a philosophical policy decision that cities make. Some cities say that's just a service that the city provides, and they don't charge anybody for throwing out trash. Other places are more like us, and they want it to be supported by fees. So you have a whole mishmash of what people do out there.
But obviously, it's the old question, you collect it based on property taxes or based on services? We have chosen the latter.
Okay, so on the capital improvement plan, I recognize it's not, it's provided really for information within the budget and is sort of a roadmap, because it goes out five years. But there's something showing up in the columns under construction, and it says police headquarters addition, $500,000. Is that something that is programmed for fiscal year 15, 16, or is that?
Yeah, it's a leftover. Yeah, it's a leftover. It's something that we try to put out there, just to, you know, remind ourselves that we need to be thinking about various facility improvements and stuff. You know, we've had conversations. Actually, you all chose to buy some property on Highway 127. We don't know exactly when we may need to expand the fire department there, but it's kind of just putting it out there to remind us of things in the future so we can be thinking about them. And then as those, each year comes along, we look at the five years and say, okay, do we need to do that or not? Can we push it out? It's really just a planning tool to help us and help you all in the public know things that are out there potentially in the future.
Have we heard anything more about the sales tax distribution? That's something they're still battling with. It wouldn't affect this next year's.
I hope not. I don't know how they could adopt it and make it retroactive, but you never know. Yeah, actually, why don't we, if y'all are interested, we could take a minute and look at a couple of charts we put together on that. I'll try not to go into too much detail on it, because it gets very technical. Actually, Councilman Lell and I were talking this week, or maybe it was in the last week, about, you know, being able to graphically present the numbers that we've seen. So what's going on is the state of North Carolina right now, let me give you where we stand right now. Right now, the sales tax in North Carolina that everybody pays when they buy something, 2 cents of that comes back to the county and then back to the city. And it's about 50/50 the way it comes back, about half of it. So 1% comes back on where did you buy it? So if you shopped on Catawba Valley Boulevard, it comes back to Catawba County and then back to the City of Hickory. The other part, all of the sales in the whole state of North Carolina just goes into a pool, and then it gets divvied out based on your population. So the General Assembly and specifically the Senate is looking at a couple of different bills that would change that, that would do away with bringing it back to a community based on where the item was purchased and would distribute it just based on per capita. Now, that is a super simplified explanation, because it's really complicated, and we have not even been given access to the formulas yet. And we keep being told there's stuff going on in, you know, special closed rooms where they're trying to hash out ways to do this. But these next charts will show you the impact on Catawba County. So if you're in green, you're happy. That means you're going to get more money. If you're in yellow, you're a little less happy. That means you're getting some, but not too much. If you're in this red, this dark color, that means you're not happy, because you're losing. Okay? And if you think about it, Hickory, we're a regional shopping hub. We have the mall, we have Catawba Valley Boulevard, we have Viewmont, you know, Springs Road. So we have people coming from all over our region to shop. And so therefore, the 1% that comes back to us based on where you bought it is a good thing. Change that to go to population-based, then we're going to lose. And every single scenario that, right now, we're aware of, you can see, our color doesn't change. It lightens up there just a little bit, but every single option that they're talking about is a negative to Catawba County and to the City of Hickory. And you can see that there's just, you know, there's a lot less donors, if you will, a lot less losers than there are winners. And I don't know the politics of all this, but maybe that has something to do with it.
So the whole thing is, we're working hard to get businesses to come to Hickory, and the rest of the people in the state is seeing the fruits of our labor too, and we're sharing them, I guess. We're all sharing it. So it's good.
Yeah, in theory. One of the things that just concerns me from a policy standpoint, and we've actually provided the legislators hard data on this, and you all have gotten copies of it, is we can account for about $4 million of very direct costs of police and fire calls, you know, the cost to maintain the streets and the, all the different things that we do. And we've been very conservative. And, you know, those are significant costs that you incur to have them all, to have a Catawba Valley Boulevard. They're good things. But if you take the sales tax away, the cost is still going to be there. You know, the people are still going to be here and be shopping. We're just not going to be getting the revenue that we're using right now to pay for the police and fire and other services that are required when you are a regional shopping destination. And then I have questions about, well, what will these communities do when they get this windfall of sales tax? Are they going to lower their property tax? Or are they going to go build a pool they've been wanting to build, or the recreation center, or whatever they've been wanting to do? And my gut tells me that you're going to have an overall increase in public spending with that happening, because we're not going to be able to avoid the cost. We can't cut our police and fire services. The people are still here. We just won't have the money to pay for it. So you're going to have to increase your property tax potentially, and yet these other communities are going to get these windfalls. So I've got a lot of, you know, from a city manager's standpoint, a lot of heartburn about the way it impacts Hickory and Catawba County, and just don't really understand philosophically.
Sure, the brown areas that they have a lot of representatives, they should be fighting for the people in those areas, correct? I would think.
There's more green areas.
There's more green and more yellow. And I guess I liken this to the water issue, is that this is a resource that we have, and they're taking it away with...
Because they can. There's a philosophy that the rural areas have been left behind. And although we are sort of in that rural-urban area, or urban-rural, we get thrown in with the urban.
Yeah, but I mean, I think broad picture, and I'm by no means am I suggesting that this is a good thing. But to give it context, I think this is all part of the state's efforts for tax reform to reduce state income taxes, which, you know, that may be something that you think would be good for North Carolina or bad for North Carolina. I don't know. But this is one technique that they're using to do it. Now, how they're implementing it is, that's where it starts to rub up.
This first pass doesn't affect income taxes.
Yeah, yeah.
But down the road, the intent is, sales tax will become a state tax.
Will become a state tax. And that's the way it is in some states.
That's right.
But, you know, getting it sort of equalized is, that's where good hard governing comes into play. I mean, it's hard decisions, but...
What I've said several times, and I'm sure everybody at this table feels that way, is I hear all this stuff, but don't mess with my status quo. My status quo is fine. And I think it's sort of like, sort of like the property taxes that individuals pay, don't mess with their status quo. But ultimately, the sales tax will just be part of the state's general fund, and we'll have to be raising that same amount of money in property taxes, I believe.
I think the editorial of Hickory Daily Record had it pretty good. It's just shifting the taxes. It's not lowering or raising. I mean, it's raising on one end and lowering on the other, so it's just shifting it.
Well, that, I think, is the problematic thing, is taking money, it's diverting money away from Hickory and Catawba County.
You're robbing it, isn't it?
And I'm guessing counties will even be bigger losers, won't they, than municipalities?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's the same thing. You see on the map, the ones in red, you know, they're just as concerned about it, the counties, as the cities are.
Is there still discussion about something to replace the privilege license?
Not a word.
I believe that is dead as a doornail.
Yeah, I don't think that's ever coming back.
It was promised at one time. It is dead.
Yeah, it's easy to promise it.
So just last thing to show you here is that each of these lines down here represent the various versions that we've heard about in the sales tax redistribution. This green line is the mayor's status quo with 6% growth. So that could be a little aggressive, but that's what we're seeing right now. So if nothing were to change, and we were to continue to grow at 6% a year, which is pretty solid, that's where you would be in 2021, which is the numbers they're using in the state. And then here's what you're going to be at the other three. So you can see the loss right there of several million dollars.
You say 6% growth per year?
That's what we've seen this year. That's what we're projecting for this year. So again, that's pretty aggressive. We were having some problems with our table of changing that and playing with some what-ifs. But obviously, if it's less than 6%, then this line shifts down here. It's a little closer, but you're still going to have a pretty significant gap there. And part of the problem is, is that their formula tries to, you know, hold the red areas a little harmless over time with population growth. And yet, the state is projecting that Catawba County's population growth is going to be less than 1% in the next 10 years, or over the, you know, from last census to the next census. So we're one of the really few communities that might be able to grow our way out of this. Unless, you know, we're super successful at attracting people and businesses and can grow our population in the 2% and 3% and 4% range, we're going to really struggle. Mecklenburg, Raleigh, you know, they're in red now, Wake and Mecklenburg County, but they're projected to have almost double-digit growth. So the population formula is going to start holding them harmless at some point in time. We're one of only five counties that's projected to not grow our way out of this thing by 2020, the next five, six years.
Any other comments, questions, here, Tatum?
The picture's not looking any pretty on the rubber right now. Hope it does.
It's going to get better for Hickory, so we are on the right track.
Let's do what it says. It's going to come back.
Well, in a minute, I'm going to open the public hearing, just a quick rundown of the ground rules for public hearing. We first ask people who are opposed to the proposal, that's opposed to the proposed budget, if they'd like to speak. And they are given up to 15 minutes. We call time at 3:69, 12:15. And we hope that the people will respect other people's need to have time. And then the people in favor of the budget have a chance to speak the same amount of time, under the same guidelines. And then there's five minutes for rebuttal and serve rebuttal. With that, I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if there's any one present who would like to speak against the proposed budget. Is there anyone who would like to speak for the proposed budget? There being no one desiring to speak, I declare the public hearing closed and ask for motion or discussion.
I'd move approval of the city manager's recommended budget.
I'll second that.
Motion by Lell, second by Patton. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. And Mr. Berry, we call it your budget, but we know, we know the people out there who really made this budget.
Yeah.
That's just who we blame it on.
Karen and Melissa, Karen and Melissa did a great job.
And the department heads, and many meetings, and many hours. And it seems like it comes together real fast at this final meeting, but there's a lot of time that's gone into it beforehand.
Yeah, you know, I don't want to beat the point to death about the flat growth in government. But, you know, for 10 years, y'all saw the lineup there. I've been on council, going on 12 years. I mean, we have, our city leaders, staff leaders, and department heads, managers, finance directors, they have done such a good job of keeping us consistent with what we have seen within the economy and with our property taxes. And, I mean, there's other communities that have not fared that well. And for us to have made it this far along, that 10-year, really a 10-year decline in some ways...
You're right.
...without major changes is, I mean, it's commendable. And they've made some really tough decisions.
And tough.
And continue to do so.
And in times that are as tough as anybody in the state has faced.
And we have not had a lack of service in which I think we have a, our city does a fantastic service to everyone. Everything that we offer, it is commendable of what you've been able to do.
Thank you. I would just simply, I think there's been a good partnership between the professional staff and the elected officials to jointly wade through these difficult, challenging times.
Don't have to say when, but we've done so much with so little for so long, now we can do everything with nothing.
And that stood true for 30 years.
Let's write that down.
I didn't say that. I'm just paraphrasing a quote there.
I mean, that stood for 30 years. I'm looking at Phil Yott. I mean, we've had, we've had great staff for, you know, all, the whole time. And so, I mean, it's been a good partnership.
And I want to recognize also Phil Yott, who served here. How many years, Phil?
Mostly was said too many, but it was 24.
And he continues to serve as the chairman of the TDA, isn't that right?
Yep.
And he brings that knowledge he has and donates it to the city, and... And he brings that knowledge he has and donates it to the city, and I want you to know, having been on TDA some, I want you to know how invaluable that knowledge is, and we're getting it for nothing. Thank you, Phil, appreciate you.
Next item of new business is Department report, and I'll ask Assistant City Manager Andrea Surratt to come to the podium and present an application to U.S. Department of Transportation for a $27.5 million grant possibility.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crone. So this project, this grant application has come up fairly quickly, that's what happens at the federal level sometimes, but we have a project opportunity to apply for some funding for some of the bond, one of the bond projects. And so, this is a DOT, a federal DOT grant application. The request tonight before you is really just to seek your permission to apply for the grant. This is a TIGER grant, which stands for Transportation Investment Generating Economic Recovery. This is the seventh round of TIGER grants for our nation, and so we'd like to submit for the CityWalk, and I'll go through sort of why that project is the right one to apply for. So the request before you tonight is to consider a $22 million grant application for our CityWalk, of which that requires a 20% match of about $5.5 million. It was, you might recall, the CityWalk project had the most detailed cost estimates prepared by land design through the Inspiring Spaces project, and that number was a high number, but it's a very complex project, and so $27.5 million was that estimate. And so those numbers and those details are what are the level of information that is needed by DOT, and so with the short timeframe for this grant, that's one factor on why this project is being submitted for approval. So just going through some details, how did this come up? Well, just really 60 days ago, the Secretary of Transportation, Anthony Fox, who is, you know, obviously a local person, announced the $500 million transportation funding pool for the TIGER grants, and they give us basically till Friday, June 5th, to get this full application in. And then if you recall, just going back to that early April timeframe, we were in the process of joining up with Freeze Nichols and their consultants, Jessica Martin Lane with McGill, Martin McGill Associates, is tasked with finding supplemental funding, and so this grant just came right up on the radar. We worked with her to do a pre-application, and we've made it through that process so that now we are able to apply if you are interested to, for the full project. So that's how fast the turnaround time has been. So seventh round, it really is about transportation projects that are tied to generating economic development. And I'd like to spend a little time on that definition for just a moment, because, you know, so you might think, well, there are a lot of streetscape projects tied with the bond, and those are, right now, still just concepts on a piece of paper and have not had any engineering done. And so for this cycle of grant application, then we have more detailed information related to CityWalk. CityWalk falls in the intermodal category of the type of project that would be considered, and so with that, then, it might, it might stand out a little more, maybe than just a highway project. But this particular grant is interested in providing affordable transportation, so walking and biking and travel, with areas that are disconnected. So I think our, you know, we've made the case that our college area, our university area, all the way up to the lake, is really a way that should be connected for people to travel, and we've identified sites along the CityWalk for redevelopment, for, you know, corporate headquarters. So that emphasis in our plan is going to stand out quite significantly in our application. So community revitalization, workforce development, education services, connections to those jobs, all of that is what this TIGER grant is seeking out. So just a reminder, we have those detailed plans, going through just a couple of options there. Bridge improvements were a part of that plan, and so bridge improvements are also allowed as an eligible project. So here's the list straight off of the website for TIGER, and I did leave at your seat the two-page handout that you can just take with you and read in more detail, or if someone asks you a question about it, that all this information is there. But intermodal is probably the greatest category link to the grant. And so funding, I've already mentioned this, we are seeking $22 million, this is a recommendation from our consultant, from Jessica Lane, and putting up $5.5 million for the 20% match. This grant is so significant nationwide that they have a, for urban areas, it's a $10 million minimum to apply. So some of our projects obviously would not meet that test for that amount of money, so a lot of things wouldn't even be able to be applied for. But it's related to regionalism, interconnectivity, of course, economic development and revitalization. And so I've really already talked about all that.
So we're kind of ahead of the curve, pretty much, right now, compared to other communities.
Right, I mean, and so timing is on our side because we had this plan ready, and they only gave you, you know, 60 days to get it in, and so cities have to be, sort of, have something ready to submit or miss the opportunity. So here's the timeline, September 30th roughly in that area, if we were to receive an award for the grant, we would hear in early September, we would need to decide if we were ready to agree to participate with DOT on that and sign some document by September 30th. That obligates us to the match, and then from there, you have until that timeframe, September of 2022, so five years, to spend the money and build the project. And that really is in a nice timeframe sequence with what we already have for the bond program.
So we would find out 2017?
Did I say that? 2017, that might be a typo.
We would find out earlier.
Sorry, that's a typo.
Okay, so yeah, so it would be, it would be...
2015, excuse me.
2015, we'll know this year.
This year.
Yes, yes, sorry. Typo topic.
I thought maybe that was the time we had to come back to that.
Well, they're going to get hundreds of applications.
Well, they are, and it's nationwide, but they're, you know, we, Asheville has received one in recent years, Goldsboro has received one several years ago, those are two examples, and North Carolina, Atlanta received one several years, last year, I believe, for streetcar project. There are several Greenway projects, so it's, I mean, we're as competitive as other cities. Larger urban areas are obviously going to compete and ask for some. We have to do our homework to connect with our legislators in Washington, and we also need to really think about, you know, how to, how to present this plan, you know, to them, and so they can make some calls and do that whole side of it. I mean, it's really a competition that we stand, just, I think, a good chance, because of our decline in population and jobs, we make the case very strongly that we need this type of regional revitalization too, and this is one project that could help spur that. And we already recognized it, we didn't just decide to make it up after the grant was awarded or announced, we actually knew that this was what we needed to, one piece of the puzzle.
And this clearly is a regional amenity.
It is.
It's like our parks that is used regionally...
Yes.
And we don't charge.
That's right.
People from outside this region to use them.
Exactly.
We provide regional amenities, so I'm trying to put a hard sell on you, business.
Right, it goes across two counties, if you count it going all the way up to the lake, it crosses into Burke County, so it's sort of the longer range look at those projects.
But they'll be used by people from even wider...
Right, absolutely.
Did we get it in the mail before Friday?
Yes, that's part of the beauty of the consultants, is they know how to do this, it's all grants.gov, they're working very hard, and just to tell you how cooperative our community has been, at a quick request, we've already heard back from Corning with a letter of support, Patrick Harper and Dixon, let's see, the Salt Block Foundation, the Chamber of Commerce, EDC, the COG, HDVA, Innovate Catawba, the Symphony, and a number of others that already have provided those documents, those letters.
The Norrigan Diversity?
They have, they're in the pipeline, so those are the ones we've actually, yes, and also CBCC, sorry. And so LRU is coming with their letter, and so there's a number of letters of community support for the grant application.
How much of that grant money was available, did you say?
500 million.
That's just for this year?
Yes, sir.
National.
Yes.
That's a pretty big chunk, I just read it, since 2009, they've provided over 790 million. That's a pretty good-sized chunk, just moving.
But at 20 million a pop, I don't, that's 40 cities, and there's...
Right, and some are larger applications than even that.
About 300 cities.
Right. They said an average grant was around 17 million, and ours is 22, so we're right in that.
And look at how many projects we can add to our list.
Right, right, so we're, you know, hopeful, whatever you need to do to cross your fingers and hope for this, and we'll just take our best shot. We have a great grant writer with Martin McGill, and so I feel like we're in good standing to make that application. And there's the right, that's not the right date, this is the right date, September 2015, to know about the project. So thank you, I'm happy to answer the questions.
Great, so forget it.
Okay, I'll ask for motion or discussion.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Patton, second by Seaver, any further discussion?
Xavier Rowland.
Xavier Rowland. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Ms. Miller, I'll be here at 8:30 in the morning to sign that. That's an inside joke. You know, some cynics would say, well, that is government money that is borrowed from other foreign countries and all, it's not money that's really in the bank. It's printing money in order to do this for us. And what I, my response to that is this, whether we get in line for these grants or not, our grandchildren will be paying them back. Okay? I'd prefer that they only spend what they have in the bank. But if we're going to be paying back money that's going to California, Texas, Michigan, and other places, let's get in line to get some of it for our grandchildren to benefit. Appointments.
I'd like to reappoint Carolyn Sinclair to the library.
I'd like to, Parks and Recreation, David Crosby, eligible for reappointment, willing to serve. Also, we second Advisory Board, I have a candidate, Mr. Bob Warment, who would like to serve.
Okay, I would, I'd like to reappoint Joe Hart to Citizens Advisory. Crystal Keon to Community Relations, Beth Wicker to Community Relations. I presume if we, James Nagel and Oscar Vasquez, if they, they're willing to serve? Let's hold off on them until we determine if they're willing to serve. Historic Preservation, Jody Blake. John Kennedy, John Kenny, rather, Library Advisory Board. B. Yang, Parks and Rec, I have spoken with him, and I think he's very enthusiastic about Public Housing, Dr. Sidney Miles. And the University City Commission, Joyce Beard. Any others? I have Allen Mitchell, Jr., for the Parks and Recreation Commission. I have Walter Smith for the Library Advisory Board.
For Parks and Recreation Commission, I would like to appoint Laney Wood. And for Public Art, I'd like to reappoint Jennifer Hilton.
Any others? I make a motion, we approve these appointments.
Second.
Motion by Wright, second by Seaver, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Any matters not on the agenda? Any general comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to recognize a couple of interns we have with us in the month of June, Daisy Savala Vasquez from Lenora Ryan, and Melissa Lovelace, who just graduated from Western Carolina and is throwing a party in celebration of that Friday at 5:00, is that right? Yeah.
Let me write that down.
Yeah.
Where?
At her house.
Oh, at her house.
So we're excited to have these two bright young ladies with us for a while.
Okay, anything else? Well, I wanted, I wanted to say that a lot of things are going on in our community. I saw where the dinosaurs are back. If they gotten him off of that fork truck yet, Allen, is he off the fork truck?
Yep.
Off the fork truck.
Ground.
Uh-huh, so the, we got the dinosaurs back at the science center, we've got the sales series, concert series, Live After Five, is that Crowded Stadium, is that right? Where's Live After Five? There is no Live After Five?
Things have changed names, Mayor, I'm not sure what's called what anymore, I'm sorry.
Friday night concerts uptown through July. There's tasting tunes and tomatoes, farmers market on, what, the 3rd Thursdays?
3rd Thursdays. So we've got a lot of good things going, I saw on Facebook, one of my friends posted to the whole world how excited she is about the new recycling plant.
Good.
So...
My wife actually had a sign out in front of our house, "Welcome Big Blue," talking about the big blue recycling can that was coming. It was a welcome sign.
And you know what, I think that deserves a shout-out, Chuck and his crowd, because I think they pushed hard to get that out.
And talking about the word getting out, I was on Facebook the other night, a friend I went to school with over in East Tennessee, we talked about what's going on in Hickory, he's now City Council, King's Board President, made his first Tennessee bank.
He said, "It's a little exciting to hear about what's going on in Hickory, it's so much money in King's Board, for me, for one of those cities." He said, "We did come over, borrow some ideas, and work with that part." That's right, we did. and borrow some ideas and work on that part." So that's right, we did. But if the word is spreading, some people are hearing about it, doing that.
And the governor knows about it. Speaker of the House knows about it. President of the Senate knows about it. About us, what we're trying to do. And I'm not big on astrology, but the stars are lining up, I believe. Anybody else? Motion to go into closed session?
Mr. Mayor, I would ask to add to your motion there, or the items. We have, listed on the agenda, discussed economic development. We've got some, things come up since the agenda for both potential litigation and existing litigation. That could be Willie Grimes versus the City of Hickory. So I'd ask you to consider those two items as well for closed session.
Move we go to closed session, put out this as the agenda with addition of litigation potential and.
Say. Motion by Lael, second by Seaver. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Thank you all for being here. We will return to closed.
Well, I got more guys. Tell them I said I will. They're back in again, so, see you there. See you later.